Welcome to the KUSD School Board Forum, proudly hosted by Kenosha's Backyard Dream Productions. My name is Ellie Shireyland. In today's forum, I'll be asking important and relevant questions to the four KUSD School Board candidates leading up to the April 1st election. These questions were obtained from Kenosha residents from across our city's political spectrum. Please share this video if you can. It helps our Kenosha community. Thank you. Hey Carl.
Oh Valerie.
Hi.
It's nice to talk with you today.
Likewise.
So the first question relates to teacher accountability. Concerns about misconduct and performance among some teachers have been raised by many members of the Kenosha community. How do you plan to ensure these teachers are held accountable for their actions, particularly in cases where student safety or educational outcomes are compromised?
Well, I think it goes first and foremost to teacher recruitment and retention. You know, we need to set high standards for the teachers we hire. It's very important that, you know, not only are we setting high standards, we are taking every step to make sure that we are keeping the best teachers in the classroom. Because at the end of the day, I think parents deserve to have, you know, a support system. They deserve to have teachers around, you know, interacting with their students in a manner that keeps them safe and puts them on a path to success. I wouldn't expect any less. I think that by offering, you know, competitive salaries, competitive benefits, adequate working conditions, ensuring teacher autonomy, I think that is a piece that's missed in all of this that needs to be brought up. We're in a position, I think, to keep our best and brightest teachers in the classroom and can be in a position where we can therefore trust that, you know, teachers will teach at a high level. When I think, when it comes to safety, you know, especially the stuff that, with regard to the stuff that you see in the news, not just in Kenosha, but in communities all across the country. One of the things that needs to be strengthened, or can be strengthened in Kenosha is, you know, making sure that we have clear and consistent guidelines as far as what constitutes being a mandatory reporter. Because when it comes to safety situations, teachers are required by law to be mandatory reporters. So having consistent guidelines around that is important. We need to strengthen reporting measures. And, you know, there's a piece that we're losing in all this and it's something I like to call the pass the trash loophole, where if there's a student that's making inappropriate, you know, conduct or, you know, making inappropriate interactions with kids, oftentimes we see situations where they get passed to a different school or they get passed to a different district. We need to make sure that we are cognizant and we keep track of where these teachers are coming from. We need to make sure that we close that loophole when it comes to our hiring and screening practices. And then also, students need to be taught about, you know, inappropriate behavior, how to report inappropriate behavior, be able to do it confidently or confidentially. And then finally, it requires that we have to hold administration accountable because then when those credible reports are received, they need to know, they need to be able to follow that up in a timely manner and not let it go unreported for so long that this behavior continues. It is a multifaceted approach, but I do think that administration, at the end of the, at the end of the day, absolutely needs to be held accountable.
Sure, so I believe we need stronger safety policies. The current policy is, if somebody files a complaint, is they have to have a written complaint to the school board and the administration. And then there's multiple layers of administration. They investigate. In the meantime, nothing happens until a final determination is made. So I think we need to handle that more swiftly. There needs to be more clear reporting processes where people feel comfortable reporting issues that are happening. And I think that when there is an issue, that the teacher needs to be put on leave, depending on the severity of the issue. And that the students and staff feel heard, that they get a voice and they feel protected. We've had multiple instances in the school district and, you know, my daughter has had issues as well. So I've dealt with this before and I think we just need to be stronger on that. Regarding teacher underperformance, I think we need to, that might come from a lack of training or understanding. And I think we need to advocate for more professional development, strong mentorship programs. I know we have some mentorship programs out there, but I know we lack a strong program in that. And we need clear expectations for our educators so that they can improve their performances. We also need to engage our community and our parents and give them a voice in how we address these issues so that they feel heard and protected as well. I think our students need to feel safe. They don't currently feel safe. And we have to have a system in place to address these issues so our students can focus on their education.
The steps I will take is to make the policy on discipline clear without a doubt. We need a distinction between misbehavior that requires progressive discipline and misbehavior that should be strict liability, automatic dismissal. And then we have to follow through. That can't be a bluff. We can't put our head in the ground. Right now, we have the $100 million lawsuit with one teacher. The liability comes if the courts determine that the district knew and didn't act and should have acted. So we need clear proactive enforcement of our policies. Not this waffling, not this looking the other way. We need to hold the bad teachers accountable. And there's the other teacher now who was involved in selling drugs. Again, there's a question. I believe they hired her back. She didn't meet my standards of someone I would trust with children. She may not have been convicted of a felony. Our standards should be higher. I read the indictment. I saw her communication that was wiretapped. I can see from her comments and her action what her motive was. This wasn't someone who hooked up with a bad boy and was led down a route. This was someone who was actively involved in illegal activity. So whether convicted or not, we should be able to enforce higher standards, the best standards for the community.
Well, as an acting school board member, I'm already in the trenches with that. And so anytime we hear something that is going on with a teacher that's not appropriate, there's an investigation done. And that's through our HR department. Once they complete the investigation, that information comes back to us in a closed session so that we can decide as a group, the board members and our HR and our superintendent, what the next steps are and what should this person, should they be let go? You know, what is the process that we go through? We do it because we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence, keeping our children safe. There are so many things that can go awry if you don't address those issues. The process sometimes is frustrating to people, quite frankly, especially new school board members because sometimes you just have to put them on paid leave because of the way the state tells us what we have to do. And what if they aren't guilty of it and it's just something that's malicious toward them? I have to say, I believe the HR department has done an excellent job with these issues. And I am very aware of them. I don't come out and speak directly about them in the public, but I make sure I support our superintendent and our HR. And when we go through, if we have to have a hearing, we go through all those steps. And it's not an easy thing to listen to, but we have to ensure our children are safe and sound and we take the necessary steps. We also take the necessary steps if it's something that's not true.
Teachers play a critical role in student success. Given the challenges of the recent budget cuts and the referendum failure, how will you support teachers with the resources, prep time, and professional development they need to excel in the classroom? What strategies will you use to retain talented teachers in the district?
Teacher recruitment and teacher retention, again, is a critically important topic and is actually something I'm running on as a part of my campaign. And the reason why it's so important to me is because I have a lot of experience in this area. First of all, I serve on school districts, the school districts personnel committee, where we're constantly monitoring the district's efforts as it relates to recruitment and retention. And not just generally, but making sure that those strategies are targeted to the high needs areas. So we're talking special education. We're talking about ways to diversify the pipeline of teachers that come into the classroom so that the teachers that teach our kids are the ones that look like the student body. Also, at my work at the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, I have a statewide perspective in, you know, some of the strategies that school districts across the state are doing with respect to recruitment and retention. For a fair amount of time, I was actually managing a peer review and mentoring grant, which basically was a grant program, competitive grant program that exists for school districts by which they can use for the purpose of mentoring new teachers. Because we know a lot of new teachers leave the profession within the first five years of employment, putting them in a position where they're interacting with a teacher mentor, paid teacher mentor, gives them that feedback and support that they need to improve their practice and feel supported to make sure that they're, they remain in the classroom. KUSD does not apply for that grant and for whatever reasons, I will never know why. But I would push, if I was on the board, to expand its mentoring programs by seeking out resources for that very purpose. And that's just one thing that we can do. We have Grow Your Own programs that exist at the district. And by that, I mean student clubs where individuals who are interested, you know, after they graduate from high school going into college, you know, they get that, the hands-on experience in the teaching profession. And while they're getting credit, you know, they're, they're learning more about, you know, in the classroom, about what it takes to be a teacher. And I think those need to be strengthened. We're in a unique position as a state right now where they're exploring ways of expanding teacher apprenticeships. And by that, what that means is the local school district partners with the local university. You know, maybe the local teachers' union is involved and through that partnership, as a student, college student is earning their general education credits. They're also in their, their school district where, you know, they're getting that hands-on experience. They're getting paid while they're doing it. And they may, and while they're getting that hands-on experience, it actually increases their chances of being employed in that district where they got that experience. I think it is a really wonderful way to bring in new teachers in the profession, especially as shortages persist. And something I would like to explore if I'm on the school board. But that's just the recruitment piece, the retention piece. You know, we need, we need to be very intentional about what we're doing. The prep time, we know, is a major issue. And I've been to school board meetings for a very long time and I've seen a lot of teachers speak at public comments, talking about how they wish they had more time for collaboration, to catch up on their lessons, to be able to prep their, you know, be able to do some grading, be able to do, prep for the next class or, you know, what have you. And they don't have that because if they're, you know, as we've seen over the last several years, prep time has been cut in half. Teachers are expected to do more with less. Sometimes they're expected to use up their, their prep time for substituting in other classrooms. They're being asked to participate in more meetings with their administration. Essentially, they don't even have time to breathe. And I think having that, being creative when it comes to figuring out how we do our scheduling is crucially important so that we ensure that teachers have prep time. Because you look at other school districts, especially in southeast Wisconsin, they figured out ways to do it. It's really unfortunate that, you know, teachers barely even have 45 minutes or so to prep when the neighboring school district is doing, you know, 60, 70, 80 minutes. We absolutely need to get creative with it. And if it means going into our budget and finding other ways to cut so we get to that point, I think it's a really important conversation to have because as was stated in the question, I mean, we know that keeping good teachers is the first step to making sure that our kids succeed. So even without the referendum passing, I am very much committed to making sure that teachers have prep time. And not just being creative in the way that we're scheduling, but we also need to lay it out in school board policy and make sure that we're protecting prep time for those teachers and that administration is not encroaching on that time.
Yeah, so I think we need to assess other districts that are similar in size. I took a look at Waukesha. I just was looking at other school districts and asked, they get 80 minutes of prep time for their high school teachers. I believe we get 50 minutes and this was coming from one of the high school teachers. So I think we need to align our prep time for our teachers with other districts that are similar in size. We also need to balance the budget and take any available funds and put them back in the classroom so that they benefit our teachers and give them the resources that they need to teach our students. And my, my background is business procurement efficiencies. And so I've worked with Chicago Public Schools, Milwaukee Public Schools, in finding efficiencies in their procurement processes to help save some of those funds that we, so that we can allocate those funds back to the classroom. So, you know, I think we also need to support partnerships with local universities and organizations to provide low and free training for our teachers because we know resources are limited at this point. This also includes mentorship programs that I mentioned before and peer collaboration to strengthen instructional skills. Our teachers also need to feel heard. They need a voice. There needs to be better communication between the district and our teachers. I know teachers in this district have voiced to me that they don't feel heard and we need to fix that. They need to have a voice in the decision-making process with the district. We also need to explore grants, community or business partnerships. And we need to look at state funding to help with classroom supplies, technology and professional development. We need to also recognize our teachers for their, their amazing work. So, you know, ones that have been here for a long term, that have outstanding performance. We need to provide competitive pay for them that matches other school districts that are the same size as KUSD. We also need budget transparency, teacher support and strategic resource allocation. We can create an environment where educators feel heard and supported. And I think that would help.
The first thing I would do is make sure that we create a classroom environment that is comfortable for the teachers. I want to empower them. I want to create, give them the tools and not mess into the atmosphere. The number one reason I believe teachers leave is the lack of support from the leadership. No teacher wants to walk into a classroom that's chaotic, that doesn't have the support of their principal, that doesn't have support of the policymakers. I've worked with parochial schools. The teachers sometimes are paid a fraction of what the public schools are. We don't have a problem retaining the teachers because the atmosphere is holistic. It's academic, it's comfortable. There's not tension put into the classroom from silly and non-common sense policies that are put in the classroom. So I think, I think the number one thing as a school board member is we can realign the priorities again at the board level, support them. We need to listen to the teachers. They are the front line of the mission. I think there's a barrier there. I think the current board has a little entitlement attitude and a we-know-what's-best attitude. And I really question, when was the last time some of those board members have sat in those classrooms, dealing with those age groups and dealing with the actual discipline that they have to deal with, the disruptions, the confusion created a lot of times by the policies? So I think that's one major, major area that will help retain teachers and help encourage other ones to come.
It's a great question. And we are in very difficult times, but I've always been a great supporter of our teachers and I will not change. That's not going to change. Issues that we have, we have to find funding sources. We have to find more funding sources. I think about my time on the board. And when I started back and I think I campaigned in 2007 and I would get on the board in 2008. I've been there for quite a while. One of the things that I ran on back then was that special education and the costs. It's very expensive. And it's, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do the services that our students need. It's very important that we do that for our special education students. However, it was only 27% funded. Now, we look at, right now, there's some money at the state where it's been put aside by Tony Evers and it's up to 60% for special education. But we have that block at the state level. This is where we all have to start realizing our children are at stake here. And some of our most vulnerable children when it comes to special education. But if we just had that 60% for our special education right now, we would have $14 million more than what we have. So those are the kinds of things we have to figure out. How do we, how do we get people to work together? And sometimes it's changing the trajectory and saying, okay, you know, you have to, if you don't do this, you know, we have to find somebody else that's going to represent everybody, especially our children at the state level for education. So it's extremely important to me. And we need to support our teachers now more than ever because they did work really hard on that referendum. And we really did want that to go through. And it's just the days and times we're living in. People are spread pretty thin financially too. That's why it's important to get that money that's already been paid in taxes from the state.
Given the recent referendum failure, how will you navigate political divides to prioritize student interests, balance the budget, protect critical services and ensure support for teachers, including vital services for students with special needs?
So when it comes to the politics of budgeting, it, actually, one of the things that I'm, I've, I'm running on is as we navigate through these tough budget times, first and foremost, what we need to do is listen to our community. I was on the school board when Act 10 happened. And I saw the disastrous effects of what happened when administration was making top-down decisions. There was not a lot of trust going on at the time. There was a lot of concern coming from the community. I was, of course, resistant to all of it because I saw what it did to student morale, to employee morale, you know, to just how parents felt about the quality of their education as a result of what was taking place at the time. And I don't want to, I don't want to see KUSD put in the same situation where they're making these decisions before the community has any sort of input. So first of all, we need to sit down and listen to our community. That means talking to teachers. That means talking to students. That means talking to parents and taxpayers alike. So that we all get on the same page as far as what our collective priorities are. So that we are on the same page as far as what it is that we want to preserve and those things that, you know, we could forego. Because if it's anybody that knows their school system best, it's the people that are, you know, intimately interacting and close with the system. So I think those voices need to be lifted up and not just, you know, at the school board meeting, but before the decisions get made. I'm really concerned by what's going on right now where, you know, rumors are going around before the school board even hears about what's getting cut and where. Or, you know, the late-night emails that come out from administration saying music is under review or athletics is under review or special education programming is under review and class sizes are going to go up. I have a huge issue with that. So navigating those priorities is absolutely important. And I think when we get to, when we get everybody at the table, I think we will find that there is more common ground than there is not. It doesn't necessarily, just because the referendum failed, it doesn't necessarily mean that the people who voted against it didn't support public education. I realize that in the economy that we have, it was very difficult to justify something like this. And, you know, the voters have spoken. The referendum was not the way forward. But it doesn't necessarily mean that we are not interested in preserving public education. I think when, you know, when we get everybody together, we will, we will find just how much more commonality than there are differences. And when we get to that point, I think we will have some very, you know, fruitful discussions. But again, it will, I mean, I think it does start with making sure you have board members who value that input. So that would be my response when it comes to navigating through that. Um, so that would be my response when it comes to navigating through that.
So the board is supposed to be non-bipartisan. I think we've gotten away from that. Um, we've let that get in the way and that hurts our students and our teachers. Um, so we need to work together, put our students first, their education first. We need to focus on balancing that budget and reduce administrative and support staff to match student enrollment drops. Um, I think in the last ten years, we've dropped seventeen percent. If we cut the administration and the support staff by that amount, we'd be saving eleven million dollars per year. And that doesn't include benefits, so savings could be a lot more than that. Um, and we need to protect student programs and resources. Um, we need to prioritize those programs that benefit the students like fine arts. We all know our school district is known for the fine arts. And we shouldn't be threatening to cut those programs um and keeping the bloated administration and support staff. I think the failed rec- referendum shows the disconnect between the taxpayers and the district. And we need to engage the community and give them a voice on budget priorities. Um, currently, our students with disabilities are not having their I E Ps or legal requirements met. Um, I, I know this because I have a daughter with a disability and her I E P is not being met. So I've advocated for changes in the K U S D playground guidelines. Um, she was left out of recess for eight years. And so I advocated to change that to meet federal A D A laws that all playgrounds are supposed to be inclusive since two thousand and ten. Um, I'm working with our local state assembly representative who's aware of the special education deficit. Um, we're only being refund, uh reimbursed thirty-three percent currently. So she is advocating for more funding. Um, but we also need to balance the budget to provide them with the resources that are necessary to meet those legal requirements. Um, one of the examples of where we are not doing this is the step program that is at the Boys and Girls Club. So the district signed a twenty-five-year lease for this program. Um, the it, the facilities are not accessible. They are on the second floor, there's an elevator. We've asked the question, if that elevator shuts down, the protocol is to wait for EMS to arrive to get those students downstairs that cannot get down the stairs. That's not acceptable, that's a risk to these students. There are stair climbers that are available that we could purchase and they're being told that they're not going to do that, which is shocking. Um, they also get small student lunches. These are children to adults eighteen to twenty-one. They need more food for, for their needs. Um, so that's not being provided. There's no security for them once you're in the building, you have access to get up to that, that area. So that's a safety risk. Um, we need to provide them with the, the resources so that they can function and the staff can help the kids focus on their education and their needs. I think these students are left out the most, they're discriminated against, bullied, and the district has shoved that problem off to the side, and I find that unacceptable.
You know, as a lawyer, I was not a litigator. Um, I do administrative law. I actually work appealing assessments, commercial and residential, which ironically relates to tax levies, taxing bodies, your actual bills. And in this type of law, it's about negotiating, it's about working together, finding resolutions. My background was more in mediation and arbitration. These are really good skills to work with not only the unions, but hopefully, if the other board members are willing to come to the table and willing to cooperate. I'm open-minded, I'm tolerant, I come from a family of twelve. That's very good practice to deal with people because my siblings had the whole spectrum of opinions and political backgrounds and, and choices. So all these things should help. I, I hope that the board comes with an open mind. Right now, we have a supermajority that is left-leaning. The structure of their policies and procedures have been created in a way that they suppress minority opinions. They make it difficult to get things on the agenda. They can close out and censor things they don't want to hear. They can control uh the opinions of the parents that they don't like and try to minimize that. So we need true openness, true transparency. All this will help resolve these issues and find a, a solution that hopefully we both can live with.
So I think, first of all, you have to make it a priority. And when you run for school board, you have to make it as a priority. And those are, those priorities for me are, uh, they're part of who I am. So it's, it's not difficult from that standpoint. But I think what we need to realize, and, and this including myself, is we have to reach across the aisle. We have to get better at that again. We get too uh set on some ways that are not productive. But I, I, I've gotta say, with the last board, we made progress, we got to know each other more. So I think that is really part of it because when you know someone, chances are, you're gonna wanna work better with them, right? If you're afraid of them or if you do, if you have misunderstandings about who they are, it's not gonna work too well, especially for our children, children and especially, again, going back to the kids that need the most support, and those are our special education students. So I'm gonna keep working that way and keep extending my hand and saying, let's work together.
The district has faced significant budget challenges despite recent renovations. Why did this deficit occur and what plans do you have to offset it now that the referendum has failed?
We have to engage the community in the decision-making first and foremost. Um, there were obviously more questions than there were answers through the course of the referendum, which I think probably led up to its failure. So, I mean, it is absolutely crucial that the school board um reestablished trust with the community um and is intentional about uh engaging those voices and those perspectives to make sure that they feel included in the process. So that would be the first thing I would do. The second thing is, you know, through my experience at the Wisconsin D P I, um, I have experienced managing budgets. I work with school districts um all the time when it comes to managing their own budgets along certain programs and making sure that, you know, each school district is getting, you know, the optimal bang for the buck when it comes to delivering services for kids. Um, I see that um Kenosha Unified is not in a vacuum when it comes to this situation. Um, it would be extremely short-sighted, in my opinion, to um have this conversation without at least considering the fact that um our state's uh school funding formula is broken. Um, we have lived under revenue limits since the nineteen nineties. Um, they have not kept up uh with inflation. Um, school districts are literally having to go to referenda every year where every year is a new record number of school districts that are doing it. And frankly, it's not sustainable, it is a situation where it's not sustainable. Second of all, um, the increase in students, you know, um eligible for special education services at a time when school districts are only getting reimbursed by the state at thirty cents on the dollar for every um dollar spent locally, that means school districts are more and more having to go into local resources to be able to pay for it. It puts them in a position where, like in Kenosha Unified, where they are, you know, deficit spending to be able to deliver those services. Meanwhile, there are private schools in the state that are getting reimbursed ninety cents on the dollar by the state, which is not an equitable system. So there's so much when it comes to our state's uh school funding formula that is um really outdated, um is in need of reform, probably yesterday. Um, and it's, it's really incumbent on this school board to work with not only its legislators, but its neighboring school districts to unify around the fact that there are some serious needs going on in the state, we are not alone, and we need to advocate for funding reform. Um, we are kinda started taking those steps as a district, but I think there's a lot more we can do. And I think, given my statewide perspective and you, you know, how, knowing how things are going on at the state level, what other school districts experience are, puts me in a unique position to be able to, to speak to that. And then finally, of course, we do need to admit the fact that um that administration is top-heavy in Kenosha Unified. There are absolutely um ways that we could cut um and be more efficient. One of the things that I would um support is explore uh energy efficiencies. I mean, I read an article about a school district in Arkansas that did an energy audit and they found that by going to solar, they ra, they saved two million dollars. And there's federal grants that still exist for it, so it's something that we could look at. Um, we could look at shared services, whether it's H R, payroll, those administrative services that don't directly impact students. We could look to neighboring school districts like Racine to figure out how we consolidate those services and make them efficient. That is something that other school districts do across Wisconsin. Um, I would say that we should contract with our C S's when it comes to certain services like um, you know, teacher support and things like that. Um, I would also suggest that, you know, our school board is so disconnected from this community that one of the best things we could possibly do is sell the E S C and have our school board meetings in the schools like we used to so that our school board and administration actually gets to know the students and the families and the teachers of the, you know, the district that they're serving. Um, so that they know, um, so they meet them where they're at and they know um what the needs really are. But then finally, we need to look at our school districts' reserves. We have kept a reserve, a healthy reserve balance for quite a long time. Um, and at, to the point that the district is actually above its own policy, way above its own policy, where it's sitting essentially at a slush fund. It's above its own policy, it's above the guidelines set by the state. That's taxpayer money that serves no purpose other than to sit in a bank account and needs to go back into the, the, the schools, it needs to go back into the classrooms. I think if we take a look at how much over we are based on the guidelines set by the state and actually allocate that money responsibly, I think we're in a position where, you know, that deficit could partially be offset. But this is, this is gonna take, you know, a lot of tough decisions. Um, and given my experience um on this board and with the work that I do for the state, I would be at a unique position to be able to lead on that.
So rising operational costs, declining enrollment, ongoing staff expenses, and the district moving slow to close those schools have all contributed to that deficit. Um, we need to offset that again, you know, going back to the administrative and support staff. We need to reduce that to match the student enrollment drop by seventeen percent in ten years. So again, if we do that, we'd be saving eleven million dollars per year, not including the benefits. Um, I did listen to the last executive session and it was presented the district is actually not in a nineteen million dollar deficit. Um, the deficit that they went to referendum with included expenses that would have happened if we, if we had passed the referendum. Um, the actual net budget position is four point four million deficit. Um, so we do need to get creative in reducing contracts, which is my background. I think by moving to pre-negotiated contracts like G P Os, uh, we could see cost savings there. We need to engage the community and taxpayers to gain their trust and how the district is managing the budget. Um, so I will advocate for clear and accessible budget reporting and I think we need community forums to give taxpayers an understanding of where their money is going. We need a sustainable financial plan, multi-year plan, instead of relying on referendums to fill that gap. And we need to ensure that we don't make cuts that harm students.
On the question of why did this occur, you're gonna hear many things from different sides. All of those are, have half-truths in them. Uh, one of the primary reasons is enrollment is decreasing. This was in part because of COVID, during COVID with the lockdowns, which was a, unfortunately, a poor decision by the board. We lost a lot of students, they didn't come back. And along with demographics, uh, the student body is shrinking. For those that don't know, the funding is per pupil. So when the, the overall number of students decline, your budget declines. The board, in a way, foresaw some of this because they are aware of demographics years before. Even now, we know that there's another shrinking coming. Uh, the next generation are delaying having children or not having them at all, so we know that the numbers will continue down. But knowing this, the board didn't really proactively address the issue. They took a while to close the schools, to shrink, to consolidate. Um, this was, in a sense, financial mismanagement. I think they do it with the mentality that, don't worry, worst case, we'll have a referendum. Well, I think the people spoke and said, no, we want the best financial management. We're there when it's really needed, but we're not there to cover for lazy or, you know, reactive financial decisions. So I, I think we can, we can work, we need to look at it closely. Um, it go, it goes back to the board again. Their, their policies, their procedures, are they reactive or proactive? Regarding where the cut should be, you may have heard it, over the last ten years, administration has grown at a higher rate than the teaching staff. That's a red flag, that's where the cut should start. Our, our mandate is education. That means the last thing you should do is cut your product. So there should be no cuts in teachers, frontline teachers, there should be no cuts in academic programs or extracurricular. I consider that part of academics and part of the holistic approach to, to educating. I encourage my kids to be involved in athletics, in music, in choir. As one of twelve, my parents required or just imposed on us. You don't like it as a child, as an adult, you realize the benefit after all the practice, but we all had musical instruments. Uh, and after the fact, I wish I had been pushed harder, even though every kid by nature would rather run outside and play, which isn't a bad thing also, but we'll get that when we cover the recess hours and, and the balanced school day.
Well, when I look at um what's happening now, we have to use a whole different way of approaching the issue. Um, again, I go back to trying to, I will continue to try to reach out to the state and say, we need this, we have to have this. That's not gonna go away. And I think more of us need to get behind it and support it and understand that's why our teachers are in this situation, because it goes all the way back to Act Ten. And um I've lived through that too. So um it, it's just gotten worse and worse because the, every year, it's like complex, more and more of the same, that doesn't help. What we have to do though, we really need to, we're gonna break down our budget, line by line. We're gonna look at every area, then the feedback, and then we move from there. But we need to keep those class sizes at a decent level, twenty-five. We need to work together to figure this out. We will figure it out if we set our goals at figuring it out and not, not putting people down. Uh, that's not gonna help any. The main thing we have to do is look at that budget, line by line. There's money to be had, there's shifting of, some people are retiring, positions we will not refill. There's other areas that we're looking at to make sure that we really have turned every stone, so to speak.
Parents have expressed a desire for greater transparency in what their children are being taught. How will you ensure that parents are fully informed about the curriculum, especially regarding topics that are sensitive or controversial? How do you plan to engage parents in decision-making regarding educational content?
I agree that parents absolutely should have a right in their child's education. But what I mean by that is their child's education. We have policies in place already um where parents, if they object to something that's being taught in the classroom, um, they have a means by which they can object. Um, if there's a library book that they don't want their kids checking out, they can certainly let their librarian know or let their school know. We have those policies and procedures in place and I think they work extremely well for um students and, and, and parents should have parent, opt a student out from a particular lesson that they deem to be sensitive. Um, but that being said, we can look at our policies to make sure that it gives all parents a voice, but it doesn't necessarily mean making sure that parents have the voice to make decisions for other students. That gets into a territory where I do not support. Um, I know that there has been a lot of folks asking about that. Um, and if I was on the school board at the time, you know, the board was reviewing its policies, that's not something I would support. Parents should have a direct role in their children's education, it's something I will continue to uphold, but not in making uh policies or uh changing policies such that they can make decisions for others. Um, and on the point of transparency, um, I actually was involved at one point in time. There was a bill that came up at the state level and through my work at D P I, um, helped uh analyze that legislation, which would have required school districts to post all of its um curriculum materials on the web to be made available for public inspection. That bill did not pass, but one of the things that I understood coming out of that legislation and would have concerns about if that were asked of K U S D is that it would result in, you know, a very high workload and a lot of administrative work to be able to accomplish. Um, you hear about stories of stuff like this going on in other states and it, it's, it's so bad that it's become untenable, especially at a time where capacity is already so low and we're looking to cut. I don't think that's the best use of our resources. I think there is a way for the administration to provide summaries of sensitive materials. Um, you know, to be made available. But I think when it comes to curriculum materials and curriculum transparency generally, I would be very concerned about the workload that would impose.
As a parent of a K U S D student, I have a vested interest in this. I think parents should be given the right to decide what's age-appropriate for their children. Advanced notice should be given to us to, of what is gonna be taught and what's um given the opportunity to review the material, materials or bring up concerns and or opt out of that program if we choose. Um, I think we could advocate for an online portal where parents could review curriculum materials, lesson plans, educational resources, textbooks and supplemental materials, so they know what's being taught in the classrooms and to their children. Uh, we should be engaging parents in curriculum review um and in those meetings and to give input and address concerns in those meetings so they feel like they're being heard and that their students and their children are learning what they find acceptable.
As a parent, I, I hear the stories both within Kenosha Unified and in different states and different school districts. There are many red flags out there and there are many school districts that don't make the effort to be transparent. The old saying is, what do you, what do you have to hide? You know, um, there's almost no excuse nowadays with technology that they can't put things online, one website, you click on it, you can click on the grade, you can click on the curriculum, you can click on the material. I know they offer, I believe you can go in person and see stuff. I don't know how comprehensive that is. And um this transparency should not just include curriculum, it should include field trips, school activities, um, because those too can be, there's a wide range of what you can lead your class to. And uh the last thing a parent wants to know, that they went to somewhere that they felt was inappropriate or unsafe or for whatever reason exceeded the expectation of where they thought their child would be. Whether we have a babysitter or a school district, we trust and hand over our children to them. I expect the highest standards. And if any child's left with me in my house, I, I increase my behavior with that child because I have to assume that the parents may have higher standards in mind. Uh, I was raised traditionally, to me, this is common sense. Uh, the joke nowadays is it's not that common, but we need to restore a common sense approach, full disclosure. Unless the board does that, they will continue to lose the faith of the community and, and they won't be able to restore the trust.
Again, great questions. So when you're looking at parental involvement, first of all, I think, you know, there should be opportunities. There was always an opportunity for me to volunteer at the school. I had to prove myself though, I couldn't just walk in and start running the show, right? It doesn't work that way. So um back when my kids were in elementary school, I got very involved in the school. Um, the P T O, the P T As, I, you know, I had one at every level at one point. And so I was extremely involved, it was a full-time job, but it was my full-time job that I want, I chose for myself at that time. Um, I think that now more than other ever, if, if you want to volunteer in your child's school, they're going to invite you in. But you have to remember that you have to be a good um representative for all children and the situations that they come from and their background. So um I think we're gonna have to get more volunteers involved. Um, we have to have that opportunity to let our community see too. This is what we are dealing with, this is, you know, and I mean, my eyes are open, I used to be a homeschool parent liaison, did home visits. I learned so much about the city that I didn't even know and, and part of it was very tragic that we had children that didn't have beds to sleep in. I mean, to me, that was just unfathomable, so I found beds, that's what I did. Um, but, but we really have to look at it and we have to prioritize the fact that everything our teachers do, they do for our students. They're working hard, how can we support them? Don't go into the school and complain, say, hey, I, I heard about this situation, is there some way I can help? You'd be amazed at how much your arms, arms would be open for that rather than complaining. Another piece is, is you've got to look up as a parent, the curriculum. Um, there's all kinds of information, I've never hit a problem with it. But um if there's something really controversial, it's been my experience over the years is that there's a, a slip of paper that they would send home with students saying, if you don't want your child to take this, to be involved in this, that's fine, here, just sign off and your child won't have to be involved in. Um, and that was more health kind of classes, so. There, but there are opportunities to get a hold of the curriculum and we can prioritize that by asking our curriculum director. Okay, if you've got something new and we, we do this, we've done it in the past, you put it out X amount of days, you advertise it, there's a book, a booklet, they come into the E S C, you can review all those materials, so. So I think it's highly important for parents that want to do that, that that's available. So we will continue to do that too.
Ensuring the safety and wellbeing of students is a top priority. How will you address any concerns related to student safety, including the protection of all students from bullying, discrimination, or other forms of harm, both physically and emotionally?
So school safety is another thing that I'm running on and something that I find to be very important. Um, you know, again, you hear the stories all the time and, you know, you generally hear that, you know, parents feel as though that their students are not necessarily the safest environment that they could be in. And it is important that when their parent, when a parent drops off their kid at school every day, that they know and have the peace of mind knowing that their, their student is safe. Um, and I have some ways that I think we could better uh, improve that environment. And I think first of all, it starts with the school board. We need to have a school board that is willing to put a positive school environment first and foremost um, out there in the district. That among its strategic priorities, it needs to be that the school environment needs to be not only safe but inclusive. Um, one that supports and celebrates diversity, honors um, students' cultural backgrounds and the diversity that exists um, within our district. And from that, you know, we be, we can also talk about making policy decisions like investing in mental health. Uh, making sure that there's adequate staffing of counselors and school social workers um, that have a focus on conflict resolution, for example, or restorative justice practices where, you know, students actually uh, come to terms with, you know, a conflict and, you know, have constructive ways of being able to address it. We should be able to have comprehensive programs that address bullying and cyberbullying and harassment. We should have um, in our curriculum, not only just, you know, your ABCs and, you know, your, your math, but integrate it critically so that with things like uh, collaboration and teaching skills like empathy and problem solving and emotional regulation in a way that reduces conflict. Um, but also we can do things like empowering students to develop um, solutions to issues and help hold other students accountable as well. Um, I think that um, this is a, you know, a comprehensive approach. I think it's a multifaceted approach. I know there are some that have called for things like, you know, metal detectors or, you know, uh, increasing the number of school resource officers that we have, but I, I feel as though that, you know, if we get to the root causes of the conflict, first and foremost, rather than taking these reactionary steps, we're in a better position to address mental health and address conflict before it arises. Um, so that would be my, that's, that would be the way that I'd handle that.
My own daughter has dealt with this in regards to her disability. Um, you know, I, I think instead of hiding behind policy and multiple layers of administration, we need a clear and accessible reporting system for any issues that our students are having in regards to this. Um, action should be taken swiftly. And we should not leave victims feeling like they're not heard or bullies um, not being disciplined. We need to ensure that students with disabilities receive necessary accommodations to participate safely in all activities. And we need to promote inclusivity through staff training and student programs that foster understanding and respect for children with disabilities. We need to restore discipline back to the teachers in the classrooms. Bullies or anyone harassing needs to be suspended or expelled, depending on the severity, and a full investigation is completed. Um, there was an instance with a girl on a school bus where she was being harassed by a couple of other students. And instead of dealing with that and expelling or suspending the students, they were left on the bus and this girl does not feel safe going to school. That's unacceptable. They should have been suspended or expelled until a full investigation was, was had. And this girl needed to feel safe. She does not feel that way. Um, we need to send a clear and consistent message that that baby behavior is not tolerated and our victims feel heard and safe. I think we could partner with local organizations to promote mental health resources for students and families, while also engaging our local law enforcement to assess and improve on safety protocols and policies.
So sadly, bullying has been an issue throughout the history of society. Kids sometimes by nature criticize, compete, ostracize, target the weak. They target the runt of the litter is the phrase. Um, it's still inexcusable. The question is, is the bullying increasing nowadays or is it the same? And are we doing everything we can in the classroom to, again, minimize? And again, this is a teaching environment. The first role is to teach us, the students, not just academics, but social skills. Are we teaching them the virtues that instill in them a desire not to bully automatically? Unfortunately, some of the curriculum, some of the social issues that are in society today, they do the opposite. There's a recent study from Rutgers showing that people exposed to DEI material, instead of being more empathetic and sympathetic, they actually become more hostile and aggressive, which is interesting. So something they claim is there to benefit the classroom actually makes it more toxic. Uh, I'm waiting for this study to be repeated several times to confirm the validity of it, but we do see it in action. Because we see the aggressiveness, um, and, and the tension. And unfortunately, a lot of these programs label people. Uh, they, they create this, they don't come in and say, I respect everybody, I tolerate everybody, I, I, I can see myself in your shoes. Instead, they want to categorize, they want to say oppressor, oppressed, and, and this is a toxic addition to the classroom. So there should be a zero tolerance for bullying for anybody. No bullying from the students, no bullying from the teachers, no bullying from the administration. We need a system where the parents can complain or file a report. If they don't get satisfaction from the principal, it goes up. If they don't get satisfaction from the superintendent, it goes directly to the board. In a way, you have a right to appeal it all the way to the board. This only, this not only leads a trail of accountability, but if I'm on the board, I will hear everything. And then I won't hear it secondhand. And I shouldn't have to have a mom coming to me directly because she can't be heard in the process. I'm not against that. If elected, you should be able to communicate directly with me. And, and I will do my best to make sure that the policies and procedures were followed, that whatever caused this is stopped, and that the tone and the attitude in the classroom is changed. And this will happen also through the teacher service days, uh, reinforcing with the teachers that what are our goals, what are our principles? Again, restoring common sense, respect for everybody, no preference of anybody over anyone else. Uh, old school tolerance, empathy, and, and those principles.
Well, and there's a lot of that going on these days and it's amongst sometimes kids on kids and it's just, it's very um, difficult to understand. Um, when I look back when my kids were in school or even when I was in school, um, looking at how do you teach children how to stand up for themselves? But yet stay within the boundaries of using good disciplinary um, uh, approach to it, right? It's really hard when many of our children, like I said, I used to do home visits, have had a lot of trauma in their life. So we need to make sure we can get those social workers, the counselors. Um, I had heartbreaking situations at the school I, I worked at. Um, and at one point, the school psychologist, we, we only had part-time social worker, part-time psychologist and part-time counselor. None of them were in the building. And the principal came to me and I counseled a little girl that had huge trauma in her life. And I knew what to do intuitively, but not everybody has that. So we need to make sure that our children that are coming to us, we really get to know them and make parents feel comfortable with sharing. If there's something that, you know, your child's experienced, let us know so we can work with you and your child. Because that trauma can come out in really ugly ways sometimes. Or they could just share it with a younger, you know, if they're in a younger class, like this young lady was in kindergarten. And she was telling the other students, so the teacher heard it right away and pulled her out and, you know, and I just went, sat down and we made a story about her loss and I let her color and, you know. But, but there, we, we've got to make sure we ensure that we can do that. And then the mental health services that are available outside of the school are every bit as important or more important. And I think part of it, parents just put down your phones. When a child is trying to get somebody's attention, I've seen this over and over again, and it really gets to me because you don't realize, uh, we had a psychologist do a presentation to us one time and she had this little clip and it was about serve and return. The, a little baby. So the little baby looks at his father, smiles, and they show somebody with a phone and how the baby reacts. And then they show somebody without the phone who's, if the baby served, the father returned a smile, the baby was, I, I mean, it's just amazing the difference and the approach. And if you take that and you go year after year after year, the child's going to think that handheld device is more important than they are. So parents have to realize, when your child serves, return, you know? And it is that simple. And um, I know you spoke about your grandmother to me and I had my adopted grandfather. And I think about all he did and how he was so joyful and kind and good. And um, to have that in your life is really special and we need to remind our parents and the students that are older, put down that phone, respond, be real, be here, this is life.
What criteria will you use to ensure that teachers are hired based on qualifications and experience rather than political or ideological preferences? How will you ensure that all teachers are equipped to provide an inclusive, high-quality education to all students?
So the qualifications that are established for teachers first and foremost are, are set by the state. And the way, the reason why I say that is, um, Wisconsin is very thorough in terms of what its uh, pathways are to receive a teaching license. And of course, it requires that teachers go through, um, you know, extensive training, um, extensive schooling to be able to get the, the, the hands-on experience they need to be equipped for today's classrooms. Um, so first and foremost, we have to abide by that. Um, I think that if, as long as we continue to uh, look at the pipeline and making sure that um, we're, we're focusing on that high quality and not finding ways to water down ways into the profession, that is first and foremost, we have to abide by that. Um, in terms of, you know, political differences, I think the best teachers are the ones that are able to set that aside. We know that schools have to teach critical thinking. That is an important step that students must, you know, learn um, to be able to engage with today's world. I don't necessarily uh, chalk that up to a difference of, you know, any sort of having, anything having to do with political opinion. If, if teachers, you know, teachers go through the rigorous training that they have to do to get to this point, to the point of teaching in the classroom, they would be in a position to uh, be high quality. But, you know, how do we make sure that, you know, the quality continues to uh, you know, to be there? We have to make sure, again, this goes back to teacher recruitment and retention. We have to make sure we're keeping our best and brightest teachers in the classroom. Um, if we're not setting uh, comparable pay, setting comparable benefits, ensuring teacher autonomy, keeping workload fair, um, guaranteeing and expanding prep time, all of those things. Um, we risk losing our best teachers to neighboring school districts. Um, and that's not something as a district we can afford to do at this stage.
So teacher certifications need to meet the job requirements. Um, I think we need a more rigorous interview process that engages the communities such as the students, the parents, experienced and qualified teachers and community representatives that, and we also need our teachers to demonstrate actual teaching ability. Uh, we need to promote better teacher mentorship programs from experienced and quality educators. And we also need to be training our teachers to be inclusive and sensitive to all students' needs. Our disabled students are left out the most and there needs to be sensitivity training on how these students can be included in outside activities, social clubs, like field trips, graduation ceremonies, um, education and sports. I think this way the teachers can help the students be more inclusive. And one of the ideas I had was actually an ability committee where parents of kids with disabilities, um, also special ed teachers could help teach staff and plan for activities and facilities so that all students get an inclusive, fair and equal education.
I think for a start, we need to put it in our policies that our goals are experience and qualifications, that we restore meritocracy and not at the expense of diversity. Um, there is plenty of diversity in Kenosha. I'm very pleased with it. When I take my children to school, I see a diverse community. And I think we just need to focus on qualified individuals. One absolute step I would like to take is I want to be on the Human Resource Committee. I want to be one of the members. I think it is the key decision that trickles up. Um, one of the best things a principal could do is hire the right teachers. Therefore, one of the best things the superintendent could do is hire the right principals. But if the head is off, then we get mediocre principals who hire mediocre teachers. If I was on the committee for the human resources, I would select people that are qualified, academically high from their schools, and they share the core values. And the core values of everyone in society, not a selective template from me. My core values are competence, empathy, and a love for the children and a love for teaching. This should be universal. These should not be controversial or labeled radical right or left. Competency, a love of the children, a love of the material, and um, the ability to communicate with the age group that they're teaching. Uh, so the only way I could guarantee it is to be very involved in the hiring and encourage the hiring of excellent, you know, superintendent and the hiring of excellent principals. And, and I would be confident that you would see the effect.
Another great question. When, um, well, the district hires the teachers overall, so that goes through HR. They go through a lot of strenuous steps to make sure that everything is in place with their degrees, with their, whatever their pedagogy, godgy, everything that they go through. They're looking at if background checks, I mean, they do a thorough job with that. And then also making sure that if it's somebody that is in a special uh, type of where it's hard to find that, that special educator, that's teaching a course that we can't fill. Sometimes it takes the uh, them to, to be able to bring them on board and then finish off that degree. So they have the money to go through that. Um, but there are all kinds of levels that are in place. And if you want the best and the brightest, you have to make sure that you treat them like the best and the brightest, right? I mean, this is, this is real life where if, if, if you don't let them know how important they are coming in the door, how are they ever going to want to stay? And I think there's a lot of things that we can do around that. Um, I've seen improvement with our new superintendent. Well, he's not new anymore, but I've seen some really good improvements and things of that nature where, you know, just building that rapport. And how do you make a new teacher feel welcome? Um, just those basic things. And then when they first come in and they have a, a class, they might be a little bit in shock. And so you need to make sure that at the building level, they get the support they need. Prep time, time to, to, to learn from your colleagues, to build those relationships. All of that is important if we want to hold on to those teachers that are coming into education. Because there are many things we can't do, so let's do the things we can.
KUSD serves a diverse student body. How do you plan to ensure that the curriculum reflects and respects this diversity, including students from different racial, cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds?
The diversity that we have in our community is an asset. And I think in terms of everything we do as a district, diversity needs to be at the forefront of our minds in every way that we operate. Um, I know the school district, for example, did a, a curriculum audit about 10 years ago. Um, but I would venture to guess that's probably outdated now when we consider changes in population. Um, but I would venture to guess that's probably outdated now when we consider changes in population. Um, but I would support doing an audit um, and making sure that we're uh, incorporating equity in the way that we examine um, everything from the curriculum to the materials to um, the teaching methods. Um, we need to actively seek out and incorporate diverse literature um, and materials that, you know, validate and honor um, the cultural experiences of all our students. I think that's um, very important. Um, we should incorporate contextual learning um, in to the curriculum where it connects connects not just uh, you know, what you're learning in the classroom, but connects it to real world issues. So so students really are able to make those mental bridges. We need to support um, regular professional development opportunities um, focused on culturally responsive of teaching and inclusive classroom practices. Um, and we need to create and support affinity spaces that celebrate student diversity. Um, of course, I would support an anti discrimination policy for the district, which I don't believe is on the books at this point. Um, and is needed in order to create a respectful and supportive environment. Um, but beyond that, you know, we could even look at things like um, the way that we are um, evaluating students for special education services. I know there's a concern about racial disproportionality. We need to make sure that our diagnostic tools are as culturally um, relevant as possible to be able to account for the cultural and the linguistic differences between the student and the teacher. We could talk about having diverse foods that um, it, you know, at lunchtime or at breakfast that honor the um, you know, the culture and the religious preferences of the students. Um, and we should also um, reduce our reliance on standardized testing. Um, because standardized testing unfortunately does not account for a lot of the socioeconomic differences that exist between students. But look, look at student achievement for through a whole more holistic angle. I think when we do that, we get to a place where, you know, we do a better job of celebrating uh, the diversity that exists in KUSD.
So our curriculum needs to reflect all cultures, racial and socioeconomic backgrounds so that children see themselves and connect with the materials. Uh, we should be getting our students and staff out into the community. We have a diverse, wonderful community here in Kenosha County, and they need to learn by real world experiences. There should be no difference in teaching students of any background. All students should feel included and especially our most excluded group, which is the kids with disabilities. I think we should be partnering them in the classroom, partnering with outside organizations like the KAC, um, Dream Playground, so it gives them an inclusive playground look and how it is to be someone with a disability on a playground and going into our diverse neighborhoods. Um, we need to provide fair and equal resources to all schools and help support students that need access to technology, supplies, academic supports so that they can participate fully in their education.
This overlaps with the question we just had. I think it starts with top notch teachers that have um, a core that's empathetic, a core that's has a a sense of justice and fairness for everybody equally. Uh, again, you hire, the teacher spends the most time with the children. They have the greatest impact on them. When we see awards for the best teachers, we see the ones that had a sincere interest in their academic achievements and their academic improvement and a sincere interest in their social development. And these bonds go continue for the rest of their life. Um, I've been in schools, even the private schools, where during breaks, the teach, the kids from the upper grades go back down and visit their teachers from the lower grades. To me, that's better than any evaluation. That shows me that the kids are comfortable, they felt valued, they felt that their opinion mattered, they felt safe. These are teachers that automatically holistically educate. And uh, as far as competence, we know if they're achieving the goals of reading and writing and the core subjects. We can see that through testing, but we can also see that when there's a happy child, they absorb the material better, faster, and in a way that it stays with them. And they don't just, they can retain it as they move up the ladder. Uh, so the primary thing is again, to have the right teachers. And unfortunately, that comes to the policy of the board. What type of people do you think have those core strengths? And lately, I think the standards at the top level don't align with the community. They don't align with common sense. Looking at the people running against me, I see a lot of comments how we want to be therapists. We want to be, you know, helping them in their personal stuff. That's not our primary goal. Our primary goal is education. We're supposed to spot kids that are struggling. And if it's with something emotional or psychological, we refer to professional help. We're getting away from giving them a general support and academics. And and we're getting distracted outside of our professional expertise, outside of where we have liability to go. And and that brings up the other issue, you know, we shouldn't be, I shouldn't be playing therapist to you. You tell me you have a problem and I'm excited and I want to help you, but I'm not a therapist. It's like me giving legal advice if I'm not an attorney. Again, they have empathy, but it's not our mission. And and the board and Rebecca and Carl, I see a lot of good intent to do stuff, but this is outside the scope of education. And I think this is where they've been for 20 years. And this is why reading has continually declined. Because they're either bored with the core subjects or they're distracted with these other issues that are not the primary concern of of the mandate, of the mission, of the parents. Remember, our goal is education. Are they being educated so they can survive in the world when they get out there? Can we make them ready to compete? Or are we neglecting the basics and now they're handicapped? And they're going to be beaten out by other students from other schools that prepared them better. Uh, most of us know we're 40th among developed countries in the world with educational standards. But I believe we're first in self esteem. But unfortunately, self esteem won't compete in the in the economy out there. And there is self esteem that comes when you're competent in the skills, a true self esteem. Not a just a false, you're great. Um, trust me, I balance that with my kids. I want to be confident, but I want them to be competent in skills. And they will have pride when they achieve that competence. So I think we're just, we're missing the mark. And that is just, that's the policy that the board's been on, it's been missing the mark. Yeah, am I being hard? No, the scores are dropping. It's a clear indicator that they're not where we should be.
If you don't feel like you're valued or you're, you know, you're not seen, that's not good for anyone. And especially our young students coming into schools and any age. But um, again, you need to have books that represent the history of a culture. And you need to make sure that the kids know they're there. Um, you need to make sure that the room is appropriate to all students. Um, I remember back um, when I was at Boz Elementary, there was one girl that didn't stand up and say the pledge of allegiance, but it was because of her religion. So we have to respect that we have a very broad group and very different people that all come together at a school. And we, I think, you know, culturally, we should be bringing out the best of every culture. Because, again, I go back to when I was a kid, there was like, um, we had a culture day and different food was made and brought in by the parents, you know? And it was just an opportunity to get to know each other and that, hey, you're from, your mom's from Italy? Wow, that's really cool. Tell me something about that, you know? Be curious, not judgmental. I think that's Walt Whitman, you know? And that's what it takes to be curious, not judgmental. How do we get these different cultures together? Because when we get people together from all different cultures, our lives are enriched. And I remember growing up during all the riots of the 60s and everything. And I remember Martin Luther King and how much I respected what he was doing to to break down some of the barriers. We have to, again, we have to reach across the aisle there. We can't afford to treat people like they're not important. And that's what happens if we don't have the right balance with that. And it's so important to realize every culture is important. It makes us the nation we've become. That's how we got started.
How do you define positive socialization in schools? And why do you believe it is essential for student development? What role should the school board play in fostering social, emotional learning and student engagement? And how would you ensure that academic success is balanced with meaningful opportunities for students to build interpersonal skills and relationships?
Socialization, in my my view, um, involves um, teaching not just the academic content, but in how students navigate relationships, um, they manage their emotions and they collaborate with others. Because I think this is a piece that needs to be recognized for students when they get out into the real world. Um, it requires nurturing an environment where every student feels heard. So again, that starts with the school board level, uh, making the students feel as though that they are being recognized. Because we know that students who develop strong um, social and emotional skills perform better academically and also fosters like emotional resilience um, in a way that supports students' mental health. Um, as far as the role of the school board, um, I mean, I think the school board can set clear uh, policies that integrate social, emotional learning into the into the curriculum and the school culture. Um, we need to again, ensure adequate funding for mental health professionals, counseling services, um, and advocate for inclusive spaces.
Positive socialization in our students is every student feeling heard, included. And it's essential so students feel confident in themselves, they speak up for themselves and others, and build a positive mindset. Um, schools should be promoting peer mentorship programs and group work to teach students how to work together and build healthy relationships with each other. And the school board should be developing policies that help foster positive and safe school organizations and environments where our students feel supported, and this includes anti bullying initiatives. Uh, we need to get back to basics in the classroom to bring up the test scores and and promote education first. Um, this also needs to be balanced with extracurricular activities where students feel included with their peers. Um, they need to feel part of a team and develop positive relationships. Uh, the activities themselves need to be more inclusive. Right now, students with disabilities either don't try out for sports or extracurricular activities um, because they aren't or don't feel included, my daughter being one of those. Um, and in grades, again, grades come first. We need to hold our students accountable for this before extracurricular activities.
As a school board member, I think the key thing that we can do and we should do is we control the day. We control the hours, we control the timing, and it would start in the morning. We even control the food supply now. Now we have a program and it's a good one that we take care of everybody. There are many kids that don't have food. First step, we're going to look at the big picture, we need to give them better food. I hear, I hear the complaints, I have them myself. I know if my child skips my breakfast because she can get cinnamon rolls or something sugary at school. I don't mind rewarding them once in a while, but we need to feed them healthy stuff. I know a lot of the fruits probably go to waste, the carrots have an aftertaste probably because of the preservatives. So we start with good food, we start with a good schedule. Uh, we need to relook at the who goes to class earliest. Right now, some of the earliest classes are for the high school students. I've seen in different districts, different states. Since that age group tends to sleep in and they're more alert with extra sleep, we should be open minded and maybe look at starting the high school a little later. I think that age group would appreciate it. Um, the younger kids get up with the sun. And then it's no fight to get them out of bed and they're already on a different time thing. So again, this doesn't have to be done, but I want, I want the public to know that I'm willing to look at these different ways. We have to be creative, we have to be flexible. So we got the food, we got this, we need to intersperse during the day, recess, stand up breaks. Uh, I was a teacher, I thought it was unfair because I like to pace, I like to walk, it helps me think, it helps the blood flowing. The children are sedentary for long periods of time. We know that a minimal movement helps, helps the brain, helps get oxygen. Give the teachers the flexibility to insert emotional breaks and physical breaks. I think we do need recess, we do need an appropriate time for lunch. I get mixed information. Sometimes I get the impression lunches are so short that I know, and I've had these issues with people with special needs. One doctor said, just chew your food 20 times before you swallow and your stomach issues will recede. That's a time issue, that's just a relaxed issue. So there's these little things, how time affects your physiology and that how that affects your state of mind and your ability to absorb knowledge and the academics. So you see how all these things interrelate. We can't impose one thing for everybody because everyone has different needs. But I would, I would have policy at the top saying, this is important, work it into the schedule. I understand that a grade school would have different schedules. And the high school. I responded to a survey, everyone said, yes, we want breaks. They noted that I didn't comment on high schools, I'm not against that. But I want to give more freedom to the principals because as they get older, their schedule changes. So I also respect the principal and the teachers. And as a school board, you can't, you got a mandate, but you got to give them a range to be realistic. Um, otherwise, again, you're putting a stress on the principal and a stress on the teacher that may backfire. We want them to know that this is priority, that we're supporting them. And if they have a day where the kids are bouncing off the wall, then give them a 10 minute break, walk them outside. Even the recess should be structured. Um, semi controlled in the way that you can have activities that develop the social skills, that develop camaraderie. Uh, these are true events that teach people to get along, uh, teach the kids to respect each other. That's one of the advantages of of um, sports. Regardless of your race, your color, your economic background, the team builds cohesion. So there are plenty of activities you can do. All this adds to a a situation where you can have this healthy, healthy environment.
Wow, it's a great question, many of them, um, combined. So my thoughts, I like peace learning circles. Um, Joe Mangi was my principal at Bullen, um, I was at junior high when I went there. That's the first time I ever met him. By the way, he knew my name years later. The guy's got, got a vault of a memory, you know? Um, but those kinds of opportunities to show how you can self regulate. I mean, if if that isn't what we need now more than ever. Um, the the peace learning circles teaches so much and it teaches about our history, it touches on that. But it really teaches some techniques on how you can be kind to each other and how important kindness is. And those are the kinds of things that social, emotional support is so important again. It's one of those things where it's like, everybody's in a big rush, we don't have time for that. No, we have to find time for it, we have to carve out time for it. The kindness breakfast, you know, um, that got started years ago, I think when Joe was the superintendent. It's absolutely wonderful. All these kids come and, you know, they're doing kind things and they get elected to be part of this group and but every, every child should get a chance to experience that. It's okay to be kind, in fact, it's really good to be kind. And I go to Mr. Rogers on that, it's like, it's a no brainer to me. But unfortunately, in a mean world, sometimes those things get pushed aside. So we need to reinforce that the people that are doing that good work, praise them. And and really, when it, when a child does a good deed, start young with them. You know, teach them how they can help in a world that needs the extra support.
The latest N A E P results highlight poor student performance. And KUSD is no exception. With the pandemic leaving many students behind, what steps will you take to improve reading outcomes in primary grades and close learning gaps? How will you ensure these efforts effectively address students' academic needs and prevent further setbacks?
I always liked this question because um, you know, we have all kinds of data out there that shows, you know, trends in student performance, whether you can take any sort of measure, whether it's the N A E P. You could look at, you know, forward exams, you could look at map testing, you could look at any number of of metric. And while all of them demonstrate some value to the extent that And while all of them demonstrate some value to the extent that, you know, they show how a student performs at that particular moment in time, there are so many limitations attached to that. We, we, we can get a lot out of the NAEP scores. And we should take that into consideration when we're thinking about school accountability in general, but that can't be the only measure. And one thing that we have to do as a school board is we have to ask ourselves, what is the appropriate measure for assessing student growth? Because I think it is a lot more than just what you see at that one moment in time. It could, for example, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't account for the racial linguistic differences that exist between students. It doesn't account for socioeconomic backgrounds. If a student even has a bad day and shows up to school late that day, the day of testing, there's, you know, it doesn't account for any of that. So in my view, it needs to be much more, a bigger picture approach to assessing how school quality is assessed. But the reality is, is if you look at our high-flying students, they perform just about as well as anybody else. But where we, we lag, you know, relative to our peers is, you know, of course, the fact that, you know, schools continue to be underfunded. Teacher shortages continue to persist and have persisted for a long time. You know, we're getting constant interference from, you know, the federal government to folks that are trying to censor teachers, to attacks on teacher autonomy, to, you know, things from any other, you know, just about, you know, you open the news and you see something new. There, the, the fact of the matter is, there are things that we can be doing and should be doing to increase student achievement and making sure that, you know, every student feels supported, not just our high flyers. And for me, that includes things like early literacy programs, reducing class size, we're hiring reading specialists. We have to focus on real solutions when it comes to that and making sure we're taking a holistic approach. Again, we also need to talk about school funding, we need to talk about with our legislature about why school funding reform is needed. We need to consider school nutrition in this conversation and we need to talk about special education. There's, it's a multifaceted approach that, in my opinion, goes beyond test scores. There are some real solutions there, there's a lot of research behind it, but we need to embrace the fact that we need to just go back to making, back to what we already know and making sure that every student gets the resources they need to succeed.
Sure, so Act 20, or the Science of Reading, is already being implemented in the school district from grades K through three with positive results. We all know funding is a challenge. Evers vetoed Act 100, which is the framework of spending for Act 20. So our state assembly representative is working on getting this funding released as well as the legislation. And she is also staying in contact with KUSD to address any challenges that they might have with implementation. I know one issue that was brought up was the speed to implement. So she's being kept in the loop and addresses these concerns with her colleagues. So I'll work to ensure that this communication continues. I think Act 20 is being effectively implemented, they're tracking the success and addressing challenges or concerns so that our student scores in reading improve and we have no setbacks.
First thing I would do is look at what we can do without money. I've been hearing constantly, "We don't get enough funding, we don't get enough funding." That may be the case, but if we don't get enough funding for the next 10 years, are we just going to let another generation slip by with poor reading standards? Again, I've seen parochial schools, homeschoolers, they're on a thinner budget. And I had one daughter, for one year I homeschooled her, I found a curriculum that was heavy in reading. She became the best reader for the rest of her life. Now my younger kids look at a bookshelf that was filled up with all the books she accumulated. And she has a love of learning that I can't stop anymore. That's because that program had it as a focus, okay? So we need to, a directive from the board, a directive from the superintendent, this is the year of reading. Make it the year of reading, make it the month of reading. All subjects, all grade levels, find a way to insert even five more minutes of reading. Even a math class, you can, instead of writing the puzzle on the board, you can write a word puzzle, a humorous one. Or a little paragraph on some mathematician that might speak to, spark their interest. There's so many ways to slip in creative reading and reading that can entice them, enjoyable reading. Does that cost a dollar? It doesn't cost anything. We have wonderful teachers, we have a lot of talent. These principals went through the full education. In theory, all these highly schooled people on the school board went all the way up to PhD. You're telling me that we can't find creative ways to incentivize reading before we get money from the state? Before we, and I know at the last budget meeting, I was reading it and how are they going to address reading? Oh, they're going to start another committee to do another program to do this. And while we're waiting, another generation is at 30% of class levels. If we continue this mentality, we will look like Milwaukee, which is now lower percentage. We continue, Milwaukee's heading in the direction of Chicago. Chicago had 0% at grade level reading. And, and no one seems to be shocked while that school board continues to focus on every other issue except academics. This isn't radical, this isn't extreme, this shouldn't surprise anybody. The parents just want their children coming out. I expect that even the black community should be outraged because I understand that the scores are even lower there. The school board should have incentives, bonuses, even cash prizes for the classrooms that show the most improvement. I would have one for the highest score, but I would also have bonuses and rewards for the most improved. So you can reward even the lower levels to turn them out. I have no reason to believe that one semester, one year should see a tweak moving, stopping the slide and turning the corner back up. And this is without asking for more funding. You know, I have a niece that was a teacher, she said her class was lagging in that. And on her own initiative, she took a month and focused more on that. And she was able to have her students catch up. That was at the initiative of the teacher. Why didn't the principal think of that? Why didn't the superintendent think of that? Sometimes we're so buried in policy and funding and, and we don't see the forest from the trees, as the phrase goes. And, and if all you have is a hammer, every problem looks like a nail. If you're so institutionalized that you think the solution for every problem is money and only money, you're not being creative. You're not finding other ways to address these issues. And, and the private schools, I was in a startup school where I was helping them start up and on their school board initially, we started from ground zero. There was very little money, but we made it to eighth grade, so it can be done.
Building our futures, and I know, I think I talked to you about this a little bit. But the new reading program, I truly think, and that was from the state, no, no dollars connected, there's dollars connected, but no money was handed out. I think we need that in order to be successful with it. Because you have to have the funding to hire the people you need to do the job, especially in this, where we're, we're spread pretty thin. But when I look at that program, I, and I, nothing, you know, you do what you do, what you know at the time, right? But now we know better and we've got other options. And we know so much about how the brain works. I mean, there's been so many studies on it that were very comprehensive. I started reading that when my kids were little because I wanted to make sure, oh, how do I open up more pathways in the brain? You know, music and dance and whatever, but there's so much available to us now. So with the new reading program, I think we have to get on board full throttle and we need to make sure that if someone's struggling with teaching that, that they get the support they need. And it's, and if they're not, that's great, you know? Some people can click like that, but we need to make sure everybody that's doing that reading program understands it well and really supports it. I think we're going to find much better results with that. My own child, when she was very young, wanted, hooked on phonics and I was like, "Here you go." And, you know, it was something that we looked at it, explained it, and then, "Okay, you do this section and you come back to me, do the quiz." I mean, it was, she just, it was intuitive almost. So it's, I thought, it's got to help the way your brain works. Not everybody's the same, so, but I think we'll see a much higher success level. I think it's important to make sure that with a new reading program, there's opportunities for parents, grandparents to review their curriculum and to ask questions so they understand it too. Because so much of what you learn about reading especially, I think, is at home. And not everybody gets that luxury because there are parents that have to work numerous jobs and they may not have a grandparent. So we're going to work together in the school to make sure those kids get the additional support they need. And that's what's going to change the trajectory because then everybody will feel much more supported. And parents and grandparents, as a grandparent, I want to know whatever I can about a program because curiosity again helps you do a better job and it gets kids excited. And that's what we need to do is make sure that we're connecting with them on that level.
Research shows that recess plays a critical role in supporting both mental health and academic performance. Will you commit to implementing a district-wide policy that guarantees recess for all students, including high school students as part of the instructional day? How do you envision recess contributing to improve student behavior, reduce skipping of classes, and enhance overall well-being?
I do support expanding recess. I think it is really unfortunate that with all of the demands that have been placed on today's kids, you know, more demands in the classroom, more test prep that, that's involved with all the tests that have come out, that kids don't have a chance to be kids, kids don't have a chance to take breaks, kids don't have a chance to just be themselves, which impacts that, you know, that student performance that we talked about. We do need to expand recess and I think this manifests in, in multiple different ways. You know, for example, I know there was some research that had been done recently on ZenDens, which is just basically a quiet space for students because we know having that chance to take a break, you know, to talk through things, to work through some homework maybe, would be a really good chance to support a student's mental health so that they feel energized. But also, we can do things like making sure that our recess opportunities are equitable and accessible for all. We can integrate learning into those experiences, whether through field trips or other sort of integrated approaches where learning and socialization are reinforced. But again, this comes back to all the demands that are being placed in the classroom and we need to really evaluate what it is that we mean by having a, a positive learning environment for all students. And unfortunately, recess has gone by the wayside, but we know that by improving and expanding recess, it increases creativity, it increases problem-solving skills, it promotes social skills and collaboration, and lifts emotional well-being. So I mean, for all of those reasons, yes, we absolutely need to expand and protect recess.
Yes, I will commit to that. I think it's important for students to get at least 30 minutes of a break or recess every day. It helps to socialize and foster healthy relationships, helps them reset and focus on the rest of their day, improves their mental health overall. But we also need to ensure that our playgrounds are inclusive so students of all abilities can participate fully in recess. It's actually a federal law that all playgrounds are supposed to be inclusive since 2010. And we need to engage those in the community who understand inclusive playground equipment to make sure that recess is accessible and inclusive for all of our students. One of my favorite quotes is from Mr. Rogers. "Play is often talked about as if it were a relief from serious learning, but for children, play is serious learning. Play is really the work of childhood." So I fully believe this, a recess helps our children focus and reduce stress, it improves physical health, helps them develop relationships, communication skills, it helps them stay involved in school, so it avoids skipping classes, it improves the mental health of our students and supports their overall well-being. So this is important.
As we mentioned before, I'm a proponent, even in high school. But I understand because I know, like my daughter, their study halls float throughout the day. So we have to be realistic, if they have two periods of study halls and then recess, I guess that's fine because they're developing the other skills that come with recess. They get to interact with their peers, they get to do activities, and that is, that is very good. It is important, and you're right, it is important even for the older kids. The only thing I would do is give the principals flexibility and I trust them. I trust them to do breaks at those critical times when the kids have been through the drier classes where they've been sitting a lot, to strategically place them. And, and even a, even a recess or a light recess after lunch to help the blood flow. Because we know that after you eat, you're more lethargic. So a good mandate, but respecting the authority of the teacher, give them built-in flexibility and the benefits will, will flow naturally.
Well, I'm a strong supporter of recess, getting outside. It, I tell all the kids whenever I go to the schools, "Make sure you put down whatever electronic gadgets you're on and go outside." Because recess, I think now, is even more important because a lot of the handheld devices and kids love video games and we know it's addictive, it is, it's something, again, go back to brain wiring. We can't ignore that, that's not healthy for a child to do that all the time. When my kids were little and we didn't have near as much, there was screen time. Parents have to do their job there. I, you had three different things in our household where you could have screen time. You decided how much time you want to spend on each device, but you don't go past that amount. And then you get outside, or you go outside first when there's daylight. And it's the same thing at school, they need those brain breaks is what I would say. And outside, also, they need to know, learn how to relate at recess time. So you have to have that opportunity for kids to get to know each other in a positive way. And I think some of the, we've lost some of that art. Again, I, you know, I, I worked at an elementary school, so I saw some of the things where kids would come in because they just made a poor choice. And, you know, they pushed somebody or, so you got to have people out there on the playground to make sure that they're well-supervised. If you can organize some types of stations where they have their space to play. Again, teaching kindness goes a long way when it comes back to going outside to play for recess. Try to see how many good deeds you can do while you're out there, you know? We can do that, we can teach our children that it's good to play outside and it's good to treat each other kindly. And I think that some of that gets lost because we do have so much with electronics these days. I recently read at a school and I didn't know what to read to eighth graders. And I found these little poems that I wrote and I brought them in and read them and they all wrote me such a kind note. And I, I told them, "Now, read, read out loud," it was for Read Out Loud, World Read Out Loud Day. Read out loud, but also go outside and take a book with you. And if you're just sitting under a tree, you know, and you're reading, but do those things, put down the electronics. And they all wrote back and said, one guy even said, "Well, you know, I might go outside now" and, and take a break from electronics. I'm like, "Yes." But that's what, we really need it. And we, again, we have to make sure we have the funding to do it and, and, and we need to hold our elected officials, all of them accountable to make sure that we have that.
For the audience, why should I vote for you? What makes you stand out from the other candidates and how will your leadership directly benefit our Kenosha community?
I think the Kenosha community needs to vote for me because public education is, is in a really uncertain time right now. Kenosha Unified is facing a $19 million budget deficit due to factors outside of its own control. State funding is inadequate. We're looking at a tax on public education by reducing the role of the federal government and monitoring things like civil rights and special education compliance and school nutrition. Public education is in need of real leadership. And I think that outside of all of the distractions that we hear out there right now and what you see on the news, um, it is more important than ever in Kenosha Unified that you have leaders who are willing to steady the course, ready to provide responsible and experienced leadership, and will be able to guide, uh, K O S D through its challenges ahead. I have been on the school board for six years from two thousand and nine to twenty fifteen. And after getting off the school board, I have spent ten years working at the Wisconsin D P I. The reality is I have never stopped serving Kenosha kids. And I would very much love the chance to be able to come back and provide what I have learned and what I have gained through my professional experience in doing education policy and education budgeting, to be able to make sure that K O S D, uh, continues to succeed and is guided on the best path forward through all the challenges ahead. So that is why I hope that with my perspective, I could be an asset to the school district. And I'm hopeful that you would be willing to vote for me, Carl Bryan, on April first.
So I'm the mother of a K O S D student and a taxpayer in this community. So I have a vested interest in assuring that K O S D is successful. I'm advocating for, um, balancing the budget, clear communication from the district, and meeting the legal requirements of our students with disabilities. We need stronger safety policies and our students, our staff need to have their voices heard. Our community and our taxpayers also need to be part of that process. Um, I have a business background in procurement efficiencies and finding cost savings that way so that we can channel those resources back into the school district and focus on what's most important, which is our students' education. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to summarize my key points and I want to do that by reading some of the comments that I got from the internet, some of the feedbacks from, from you, the community. Because I think they hit the points right on the head. I think they are a hundred percent in line with where I'm coming from and what my goals are as a parent of three in the school system, as a taxpayer, and as someone who wants my children to succeed in the world. I, I want transparency, accountability, and a return to traditional academic values. I want education that enhances their ability to function in the world. And this would include, as this person said, and I'm a hundred percent in agreement, cursive writing, money management. Back in the day, we used to teach people how to write a check, even though that may be a thing of the past with the cell phone apps and the auto stuff. I want to better prepare high school students for work opportunities after graduation, whether they're college bound, trade bound, or directly to the workforce. Uh, and I do want to uphold the integrity of the education, ensuring the physical responsibility and protecting the students from ideological agendas. These were feedback from you and it was phrased so well that I didn't feel the need to use my own words, but those are my words. Uh, we need to go back to basics. We need to realign the priorities of the board. We need to stop the fluff, stop the distractions, go back to our core mission. When I was young and I didn't look at the statistics today, it was shocking when they said, how many adults don't know how to read? And that number had been declining for decades, but I think it's gone the reverse again. And that, that is shocking in the age of technology, in the age of all the resources we have, in the age of the computer and other stuff. There's really no excuse. Uh, we need to do what our job is. Let the parent parent, let the school board do their things and let the teachers teach.
Well, I have years of experience on the school board. I know how to reach across the aisle and work with one another, um, because we have to do that. I think that working in schools and the time that I spent in my job that I do now, I'm in the schools because I have volunteers. So those volunteers are from all different backgrounds and they're in the schools, uh, helping to support children um, in our school district and it's at the elementary level. So I spend time in the schools and I have some at the, the middle and high school for mentoring where they've, they've worked with kids from, uh, kindergarten all the way up through graduation. So I've been fortunate for that. But I think it's just the fact that I have all this experience, um, over the years that I can help others in a situation because of that experience or I can relate to it. Um, and, and that everyone needs to work together. Um, we're going to have different views and how things should be done. But let's figure out how we keep coming back and realizing it's about the kids, it's not about us. And it's about what we're doing to make sure we're ensuring the very best educational process for our children and their mental health, their physical health, and those extra, uh, things like playing an instrument, being part of choir, doing theater, chances to express themselves in other ways. And I will support all of that wholeheartedly. I will never give up on that and we will figure it out and we will maintain those programs. So, um, that's why I'm running again.
As we close, we'd like to express our sincere gratitude to the candidates for their participation, to the dedicated team at Backyard Dream Productions for making this forum possible, as well as the many Kenosians who contributed thoughtful and vital questions. Thank you to all the viewers for watching. We encourage you to please share this video so we can reach more members of our Kenosha community. Before I go, I'd like to quickly announce my first children's book I'm authoring and illustrating titled, Key Nowhere, The Key to Knowing Kenosha, set to be published in two thousand and twenty-six, so stay tuned. Thank you for joining us. Make sure to get out and vote on April first and let your voice be heard. And if you are curious, here's a little more info into what Backyard Dream is all about.
Ever since I was a kid, I always enjoyed making films in my backyard with all the neighbor kids. I built stages and we put on performances during family parties. And I always wanted to continue that dream into adulthood and start a production company. Um, and really show the eight-year-old self that anything's possible when it comes to dreams and just make movies, make short films, uh, working with corporate clients, all of that all encompasses my dream of my eight-year-old self. Over the past ten years, we have done everything from short films to corporate clients and everything in between. We do live events, we go on location for clients, even do stuff in the studio. In the last four years, we really expanded the business in doing virtual production with a ten by thirty LED wall, which is the same technology they're using in Hollywood. Normally in a, in a studio, you have a large green screen and that green is replaced in post. In our studio with our ten by thirty LED wall, we can do it in real time right in the camera. So we build the environments and then we put them on the LED wall. And when you shoot that wall, you get a full parallax three D of that world. This dream may have started in my backyard just by myself, but over the years, the team has grown. We have Ken Stouffer as our producer, Mike Detterman as our director of photography, and Jeff Rodriguez as our creative director and virtual production supervisor. It takes more than just one person to make this all happen. It was very advantageous for me to start Backyard Dream in Kenosha because, one, it's my hometown. Two, we have a very creative community. And three, we're between Milwaukee and Chicago, two large hubs in the industry. I want to continue to grow the business here because this community has been great and it's striving to something even better. One of the biggest missions of Backyard Dream is to work with students and young adults. And some of those opportunities include coming to the studio, taking a tour, experiencing the gear, experiencing a production, and ultimately hiring those students back to work here. And that means that we're keeping our students local and that they're able to work in their own backyard with the resources that we're able to provide. When we found out that Backyard Dream had won the Forward Award, it was very humbling to see that the community is supporting us, that we are making a difference in Kenosha for young adults and future companies that are coming here. This all started when I was eight years old and that dream has never changed, just the backyard has been getting bigger over the years. So I think it's important that you tell your story, you get out there and show the world that anything is possible, no matter how small your resources are at that time.